Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the rec reflect that all council members are present.
All right, Mr. Perkins, November 21st.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. This is the advance briefing for Monday, November 21st. Consent agenda, item number one is a purchase from Q's CCTV van for wastewater maintenance. Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Johnny. Good afternoon, City Council. This CCTV van, we actually came through in July, got approval for it for $350,000. By the time we got a build spot secured and got the vehicle spec'd out, we were pretty low on our estimate. So, we are coming back to ask for approval to purchase this CCTV van from Q's out of Orlando, Florida, using an HGAC contract for $470,000. Yes?
Can you remind us the benefit of having this, or what it does?
Yeah, CCTV then, they run these cameras through our wastewater pipes. It's part of the maintenance, being able to see what's inside and part of the maintenance program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings.
Item number two on the consent agenda, special counsel contract amendment with Craig Trueblood, a law firm, McKenna Gates. Our presenter is our city attorney, Mr. Lyndon Smithson.
Good afternoon, Council. We are here asking to modify the contract that we have. We have already paid out approximately $50,000 on this matter, but we are asking our outside council to do more work on it. And I will speak into the microphone so that everybody can hear me. This is relating to the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that we were issued in July 2022. We do not know that we will be able to meet the requirements of that permit absent a large expenditure of capital to increase our wastewater treatment plant system. So, to that effect, we have asked for an appeal of that permit, and Mr. Trueblood is doing the work on that. He has a history with us. We have contracted with him in the past, and this is a litigation that we do not feel comfortable handling ourselves. So, we're asking to increase the amount by $100,000. The estimation to the end of the contract is probably about $250,000 in briefing, but this should get us into the spring, possibly next spring I would have to come and ask for more.
Just so everybody knows, this is in regard to, Marlene, I see you back there, so just so I'm not spouting off things that aren't true. Some of the requirements are just too small to measure in terms of the pollution.
Yep. Could you tell us what the goal is that we're trying to get?
Elaborate on that.
Well, we are one of five permities on the Spokane River. The other four permities have also appealed their permits. We were the last to do so because our permit lagged, because if you recall, we had a second public comment period on ours. So, it makes sense for us to make sure that we understand how all those regulations are going to come in place. Our goal here really is to have a greater understanding of all the requirements of the city and how those relate to the other dischargers within the Spokane River watershed. We also are dealing with, as you know, Councilwoman Kinnear, you know, a PCB regulation that's really in flux. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency is currently underway with what's called a TMDL for PCBs, so that leaves us with a lot of uncertainty. So, all of the permities on the river are at least questioning the timing on how all of these things come together, so there's that. Plus, there's a variety of studies and things that have very short timelines that are really new in our permit that we've questioned. So, there's a number of items in our appeal that we're hoping to resolve with the Pollution Control Hearings Board and that action.
So, we just upgraded our wastewater treatment program, right? So, are we going to need to, is that something, well, I guess you don't know yet, but is that going to be required more?
So, that's what we're concerned about. We just actually have put in our next level of treatment, which, just the next level of treatment alone is about $125 million addition to the plant. And so, and we don't really have the results from that yet, so we feel like that's another thing that's premature, Councilwoman, is that we don't really know what our system is capable of, and the testing is very difficult at these low levels that are being discussed with our permit and with the TMDL. So, we really like to get a better handle on what our facility actually can do, which we believe to be some of the highest quality affluent in the nation, before we get additional requirements that our citizens would have to foot the bill for.
Okay.
I would really like to get a presentation from our lawyer on this, because this seems really vague, what our goals are and specifics. I'm wondering if we could have an executive session before we do this contract and have Mr. Trueblood kind of explain to councilwalk. He could do it, you know, virtually. He doesn't have to show up in Spokane.
Absolutely. I'm just looking at Libby, and she says, yes, we can do that.
That'd be great.
I guess in terms of timing, is there an urgency to any of this? You said that we lag behind the others. Do we need to file that appeal?
Well, we have filed the appeal.
Okay.
Because we did talk to council about that. So, the appeal has been filed, and so it's in process. This is really to cover the legal fees going forward as that appeal moves ahead. Our hearing date on the appeal itself is not scheduled until next fall. We're going through some issues around whether we would get a stay of our permit, so that's what's pending before the Pollution Control Hearings Board currently.
And then, Lyndon mentioned that we would likely need a significant capital expenditure to meet the requirements of the permit, and I'm wondering, do we have any sort of estimation in terms of what that would look like? Is it something on the same level as the SRO investment, or is this something different?
Well, you know, it's hard to know, because some of it is, you know, investigating whether we need to expand the next level of treatment based on some milestones in the permit. And so, you know, if we had to expand that system, is it $100 million expansion? Probably. But, I mean, so, that's a couple steps down the process, if you will. So, we're trying to deal with making sure that the permit is, in a way that we can manage it as effectively as we can.
Okay.
And just to answer Council President's question, definitely, we can set that up, and even next week would be, well, I guess I have to check with Mr. Trueblood and his schedule, but we can set it up sooner rather than later.
And again, virtual is just fine.
Yeah. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Next item on our consent agenda for advance briefing Monday, November 21st, item three, master services agreement renewals 202 for heavy equipment body repair services for the fleet services and fire departments, 3A Fleet Painting Incorporated, 3B Kenworth Sales of Spokane. Our presenter is Fire Chief Tom Williams.
Good afternoon, Council. Good to see you all today. Hey, we're asking for a one-year extension of a contract that we currently have in place that's our heavy equipment repair. You know, as you recall, our equipment's pretty specialized. Our logistics section does fantastic work, but there are times when we need specialized work or in the sake of timeliness that we need to go outside to get some of those repairs done.
Does the agreement only allow for a one-year, or I'm just kind of curious on why the one-year?
It's just a, I do believe it's just a one-year extension for what we already have in place.
Okay.
So, we will have to come back to you.
Okay. So, I want to be very careful how I word this. We have been purchasing vehicles that were used in instances and then painting them and doing work to them, but they were still old vehicles. Is this that, or are these, is this different?
I'm going to tell you that I can't answer that question. I don't know. I will find out. What I will say is, I don't believe that's what this is.
Okay.
This is for our heavy equipment.
Okay, thank you.
I will get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Williams. Item four is a consultant agreement with Consoor North American for onsite chemical feasibility study, and our presenter is Marcia Davis.
Good afternoon. This contract with Consoor is for us to investigate the feasibility of changing our chlorine that we use at our well stations to be able to generate that onsite. Instead of, right now, we have, we use chlorine gas as a disinfectant that we bring to the site. So, this is a study to look at the feasibility for each one of those well stations.
So, I've been doing some tours as we're exploring fluoride, and this came up about us transitioning from a gas to a more liquid injection on that. If this is something that, with the study, depending on what we do with fluoride, is this something that you would be able to pair with both of them for us to be able to, whatever expansion or modifications necessary, could you do that in a similar timeframe?
Not knowing exactly how long it would take the fluoride, our plan is to, when we're doing, whatever kind of work we're doing at the well station, that's when we would update it. So, if we have another project, a capital project, that could be the fluoride, we would do it at the same time, because that would make sense. We'd have some savings on mobilization and just other workers there. So, we could do it that way. They're different enough, and I don't know of the spacing, if it could be like we're doing two separate contracts at the same time, but we try and make them as most efficient to contract them, whatever makes sense to put them together.
So, are we just essentially doing this analysis to see if there would be a cost savings or efficiencies created by switching to the different?
Right, to see the cost for, that's one of the reasons. The other concern we have is there's been supply, limited supply issues. I don't know if you remember, I think it was last summer, we had, there was a limitation on supply, so we asked for conservation. It's not a situation we want to be in. So, it's also part of that is, we can't really stockpile the chlorine gas. I mean, it's dangerous, and so it's looking at a more efficient operation also. So, we'll take, we'll be looking at a lifecycle cost, which includes the operation cost as well as the capital, to see what is the most effective. So, it will, so I guess the short answer is yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Item five on the consent agenda is an interlocal agreement amendment with Spokane Transit Authority and the Spokane Police Department, and our presenter is Police Chief Justin Lungren.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of council. This is an amendment to a current interlocal agreement between the City of Spokane and the Spokane Transit Authority. The main changes to this interlocal agreement are going from a lump sum reimbursement from STA to an hourly rate of reimbursement. It allows for shifts up to eight hours per day, Monday through Friday, at the STA Plaza, staffed by downtown precinct officers at mutually agreed upon times between the STA and the Spokane Police Department. It also removed some language that related to limited commissions that we provided to STA in the past. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
I'm the sponsor. I shouldn't have questions, but I do have an ask, and that is that in the past, we've had officers there, but they haven't been really visible. So, I guess my ask is to make sure that those folks who sign up for that duty actually are visible and accessible to the public, because the transit authority and that plaza is a hub for people to get to where they're going in a safe manner. Want to make sure that police are partners and are able to interact with the public to give that feeling of safety.
Understood. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Lungren. Item six on the consent agenda, contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce to accept grant funds to support utility building customers with delinquent accounts. I believe this was briefed at Urban Experience a short time ago, but in case there's other questions, follow-ups, Marlene Feis, Public Works.
No, all right. And then there's an SBO on the same thing, too, City Administrator.
Thank you, Marlene. Item seven, agreement with HIP of Spokane County doing business as community-minded enterprises in conjunction with the 2022 Child Care Program Grant. That's item seven. Item eight, an agreement with Inland Northwest ACG Apprenticeship and Journeyman Training Trust in conjunction with the Pre-Aprentice Training Program Grant. The presenter on both items seven and eight is Michelle Murray from the Department of Finance.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Councilmembers, Council President. I'm here today to present an award. So, the City of Spokane issued a childcare program for RFP in September of 2022. The RFP closed on October 5th, and the applications were reviewed, and upon review, the grant was awarded to community-minded enterprises for their program. So, do you have any questions?
Just in terms of the reporting back, I guess, what will we see and kind of how frequently will we see it in terms of the deployment of these dollars and some of the...
Well, they're allowed to bill, to grant out the money, they're allowed 10% administration on all the funds that they grant out to the childcare providers for retention bonuses and for stipends for childcare. And so, they'll have, they set their program, they set their basis, and they'll report back to us on their, what they've awarded out, and then we'll submit payment.
But will we get, like, I don't know, monthly, quarterly reports back? This is how many people we've been able to increase capacity to support, you know, just that kind of stuff?
Yes.
I have a quick question. So, are they responsible for marketing so the community knows where they can go to get the grants and get the funds? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to comment on that, Councilmember Stratton. We had looked at doing childcare in-house initially as a cost savings. You saw Michelle roll her eyes. We realized we did not have the expertise to do that work and the outreach, and so we really quickly came to the conclusion, we needed people who were in the field, who had those relationships, who could do all that reporting and accounting back to us. It would have taken us a significant number of staff, and there would have been no cost savings, and probably not as effective as community-minded enterprises will be in doing this work.
Thanks. Okay, and then next, the City of Spokane issued a pre-apprentice program, RFP, in September 2022. That RFP closed on October 3rd, and the applications were reviewed, and the grant was awarded to Inland Northwest AGC. So, I'm requesting approval to award the $400,000 for the pre-apprentice program. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Item nine, report of the mayor, pending A9A, claims of payments of previously approved obligation, including those from Parks and Library. Item 9B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations. Item 10, city council meeting minutes. Both items, 9A and B, and item 10, will be completed for the council meeting next Monday, November 21st. Moving to special budget ordinances. Our first ordinance from the Fire EMS Fund is an action arising from costs related to responding to regional wildlife mobilizations. Our presenter again is Fire Chief Tom Williams.
Well, hello again. So, as you are aware, part of our mission is not just local, but we do regional assistance throughout the state and sometimes across the country, and part of that is, we support 10 members that are part of a federal incident management team. So, part of that commitment is an expense to the city, but all of that is reimbursed. So, we actually get reimbursed as a city for their wages, their benefits, and the overtime that it costs for them to be outside of our region. This special budget ordinance is simply asking to put that money, as we've been refunded back into the fire department's budget. Yes, ma'am.
So, it pays for overtime for the actual firefighters who are out there. Does it pay for the overtime that it would cost for their positions here?
Yes, it does. Backfill is what we'll call it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, so it's cost neutral to the city.
Thank you, Chief Williams.
Thank you.
Next, special budget ordinance, as Ms. Feis mentioned when she was here before, the utility building fund, action arises from the need to accept the newly awarded Department of Commerce grant funds. So, council's been briefed on that. The next special budget ordinance, the American Rescue Plan Fund, action arises out of the need to appropriate authority for funding one-time costs to improve fire safety. Councilmembers Oppone, but I believe this was already briefed.
I don't know if we did brief it.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty straightforward. This is an amount of funding, $100,000 for the house, just the house, not the vehicle for the fire safety house, plus an estimate for inflation costs, since the estimate was from last February, with the goal of hopefully they can find partnership if they want a new vehicle or continue using their old vehicle.
And I'll say, Councilmember Cathcart was really leading this charge in the beginning to get this firehouse and educated us on the importance of it, so thank you for that.
We did talk about it at a study session.
Yeah.
And I would just say, this had a lot of discussion about what to do with the remaining ARPA, and this seemed to be one that we didn't want to slow down, because we want to get it ready for next school year, so, and there was a lot of agreement upon it, so that's why we tried to move this one forward.
Hope we can all go take a tour of the house when it's done. Just not together.
Three at a time.
All right, and then our final action on the advance briefing from Monday, November 21st, final reading ordinances under hearings, H1A through G. I believe the council's been briefed at previous meetings on all these topics, but Casey Downing is here to answer any questions on those comprehensive plan amendments that the council may have at this time.
Good afternoon, Council. We also want to note that staff is planning on having a presentation at the hearing next week for any members of the public who've been following along. We wanted to see if a separate presentation next week's briefing is also desired. Sounds like a no.
So, on the item C, which is the, right, residential 410 to Center and Corridor at 2402 East 31st Avenue, can you talk about that just a little? Are you savvy with?
Yes, that was my project. So, the original proposal was to go to residential multifamily rather than the Center and Corridor CC4 zoning and, you know, the associated land use. Plan Commission did choose to recommend the CC4 zoning and Center and Corridor transition land use designation, as it is directly below the Lincoln Heights District Center. The applicant has requested that the CC4 be the approval zone. There has been some discussion from the neighborhood council whether that was appropriate or not. There have been public comments submitted that have been sent to council. There is a specific question. I can go into that.
And what's it going to look like, potentially?
Yeah, so the comprehensive plan amendments are non-project action, so there is no development proposed at this time. The applicant has indicated that they're looking to do apartment buildings with the CC4 zoning, potentially adding a small retail space like a coffee shop, but there's no proposed development at this time.
Thanks.
On, under A, so I know the property owner has said that they're okay with sort of that compromised 55-foot height limit, but I'm curious, have there been, have there been any, I haven't spoken to them, so I'm curious, have there been any substantive conversations with them as to whether or not that compromise will reduce the number of units that they're planning to build or, you know, alter in a significant way kind of what that plan looks like?
So, they have not provided any information about whether that impacts the number of units. They have stated that the reduced height would spread out the building structures. Their original plan was to have smaller footprint of structures, but no discussion about the number of units has occurred.
And do we know by chance, do we know if there's a difference in how that would impact the area if it's a wider foot, in terms of traffic specifically, wider versus a more vertical?
The applicant has indicated that it could potentially impact parking spaces. There may be less room for the parking that they provide, but no analysis has been done at this time.
And if there was going to be an amendment, 70-foot would be kind of the closest to what they had requested, correct?
Correct. 70-foot feet would be the next allowable height. They did originally request 75 feet, but that's not allowed in our code.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Casey. And finally, under hearings. And finally, under hearings, H2, continued hearing on the proposed 2023 budget, continued from the November 4, 2022 discussion.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. So, moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. Advanced agenda is approved. And I don't think we have too much change here requested. I am looking at page eight on consent agenda. There's a request to add contract extension on disposal of waste. I don't I don't know that we've been briefed recently on what, because I know we were going to try to get this changed, and so I'm a little unclear. Is there someone that can...
Yes, sir. Chris Abrams is here to brief us on the discussions with the current provider.
Come on up.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm seeking approval to exercise the second of three one-year extensions with Republic Services for the disposal of incinerator ash and bypass waste from the waste energy facility and the two county-owned transfer stations. The value of this contract is estimated at $11,500,000, including tax, of which the city would be reimbursed for the county's share of bypassed waste from their facilities. So, I'd be happy to answer your questions, Mr. Cathcart.
Yeah. I guess my only question is, why the one year? My understanding is from the vendor is that there were kind of multi-year options that might have reduced the overall cost.
So, it's a big picture. Our inter-local with the county expires. There's just one year left on that, and the county was unwilling to proceed with extending the inter-local at these prices. They did not feel that they are competitive with market rates. So, to maintain the future of the interlocal and them as part of it, we elected to just go with the one-year extension rather than the two and the staggered pricing.
Okay. If I can add, Councilmember Cathcart, the vendor was not willing to look at any of their options that would have had a further conversation about the rates, the fees, and different terms. And so, at that point, we decided we need to exercise our one-year option because time was up and to move this forward. But we did make a very good faith effort to reach out to the vendor and have very deliberate conversations about the structure of the rates and the fees.
Any other questions?
So, I've heard that this rate was higher, but this wasn't agreed-upon price already in the contract? We're just extending it, or is there...
So, it's last year, there's a CPI index tied into it, and last year it was about 9%. They only elected to institute a 3% increase. So, for the bypass waste, this year, they increased it 17%, which would have been the 9% from last year, plus CPI is currently in excess of 8%. So, it kind of trued it up with the CPI index. The ash was more. That was a 30% increase, and the rationale behind that is because, you know, things like diesel are up 47%, and for them, it just wasn't tenable to continue with the CPI index increases when true costs were significantly higher than that.
So, they're within their rights under the contract. You just didn't exercise it fully previously?
Yeah. It's mutually agreed upon. They weren't mutually agreeable to CPI index for this one-year extension.
And can you just educate us a little bit about what it is that they do? How does this fit into the whole struggle of waste energy?
Sure. So, like, for example, at the waste energy, we have waste that comes in that we aren't able to process, like construction debris, you know, asphalt shingles, things like that. They're detrimental to the process. So, we pull that material aside, and then it's loaded into rail containers and then shipped to their landfill. The ash that's left over as a residual from the process, that's loaded into containers and shipped to their landfill. And then the county does the same. They, if, like, if we exceed the capacity of the waste energy facility, they'll bypass waste from the county transfer stations directly to the landfill. And then the other thing, too, is that the ash from the facility is considered special incinerator ash, and it has to go into a dedicated monocell. So, there's some additional requirements for managing that material.
And then what's going to happen next year? So, we're coming...
We're, I've already pulled the RFP that was issued 30 years ago, and we'll issue a new RFP that aligns with the renewal of the interlocal, and we're starting discussions with the county on renewal of the interlocal as well.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Yes.
I would say, have the opportunity, go on a clicker tat and see that little operation down there. And I don't know who else does that work, but how they treat that waste and the volume that goes on down there is absolutely amazing. So, I know the cost has gone up, but they are doing phenomenal work down there.
And, yeah, and they do it right. You know, they do have, you know, recovery of the landfill gas that they generate renewable natural gas from. And so, yeah, they are environmentally conscious in what they do.
Great.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adjusting our agenda?
So, second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. The rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add item 19?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adding item 19 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. So, item 19 is added. And then, if you look on page nine, under ordinances, there's a request to add an ordinance that would allow the creation of a program specialist and a program professional. This was briefed last week, I believe. Is there a motion to add ordinance C36328?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? That's added. Does anyone want any more briefing or questions from staff on this? Going to page 11, special considerations. You might recall that we were promised some supplemental findings of fact to justify the building moratorium in Leita Hangman until March 11th. Those have now been circulated. It would need to be added to tonight's agenda, though, if there are motion to add.
They've been circulated? Yes.
I haven't seen them. I haven't seen them either. Maybe they haven't been circulated.
They're in the council packet.
What?
They're in the council packet.
Oh, they're in the council packet. Okay. So, we're asking to vote on them, yeah, but is there a motion to add them?
So moved. Did you move?
I seconded.
Okay.
Okay, whatever.
All right. So, moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding item S1, supplemental findings, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
How many nays? Two? Three nays?
No, no.
Four nays?
Were you in it?
No. No.
How many nays again?
I put up two fingers with that one.
I see.
I just put up two fingers.
Switching languages on this. Okay. All right. That is approved.
Council President, I had a question about that.
Yep.
The findings are basically the same as the whereas's in the original resolution. Is that right?
Essentially, but there's some more.
A couple more. Okay.
And I don't have it in front of me, but I will at 6:00.
Mr. Richmond was moving, making movement to come down.
He's going to be coming down here at 6:00, and
Okay. Brief us at 6:00?
No, I'm doing the preliminary, and he's going to make sure I don't say anything I'm not supposed to.
Okay. All right. That, item number S1 is added. All right. On page 12, the ordinance 36307, updating the annual city report, property tax levy. My understanding is, there was a substitute circulated earlier today. Now that we got some numbers from the county, is there a motion to substitute?
So moved. Substitution.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate, in favor of substituting, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay. Any abstentions? Okay. That's substituted. That's all the formal requests I have for adding things to tonight's agenda or changing things. Is there anything else anyone has? Okay. We do have an executive session scheduled to discuss labor relations, labor negotiations. How much time, Mr. Perkins?
30 minutes total time on both issues.
So, that hour?
So, an hour?
No, 30 minutes total time.
Okay. Yeah, an hour.
No, 30 minutes.
Discuss.
Total.
All right.
I heard you saying, yes, sir.
We'll be in executive session till 4:40 by my watch. We don't anticipate taking any further action, but we'll come back and either adjourn the briefing or extend it.
City Council is extending executive session for five minutes until 4:45 p.m. They do not intend to take any further action when they return.
Brian Beggs, City Council President, and we've finished our executive session. So the meeting, the briefing session is adjourned. We'll see you back at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.